Clock on the computer, let's roll.
Oh, it's right on time.
We're just starting. There we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the December 11th, 2017. Meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Just needed the battery, that's all the clock did.
I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all. The board is just coming out of a paperwork review session. The first item on the agenda is review and approval of consent items. In the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the November 27th meeting. On accounts payable manifest, December 5th of $169,675.74. And December 12th of $72,214.45. We have a payroll manifest, December 7th of $45,064.10. And also on 12/7 of $46,254.09. 12/14, we have a manifest of $53,918.85. We have the 2018 ACH school payment authorization. We have the earned time expendable trust fund expense. We have the building system trust fund expense. We have an intent to cut. And we have seven veterans credits. Are there any items that members would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perry?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Are there any other items that members would like added to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll just announce that public input will occur no earlier than 6:15 PM tonight. And on with the regular order business for the meeting. First up, we have a couple of appointments. And the first is for Mr. Dennis Page, alternate planning board member for a term expiring March 31st, 2019. Mr. Page is here tonight. Would you come up, Mr. Page? And welcome, and we want to thank you for your service. And I just wanted to introduce you to the Board of Selectmen. See if they had any questions for you, or if you have any questions for us.
No, I have no questions.
Do any of the members have a question for Mr. Page? He's recommended by the planning board, right?
Yes.
Could you tell us a little about yourself?
I just finished schooling up at NHTI. It was a certificate program for building inspection, plan review, plans examiner. And actually, our finals are this week, and I'll be done, I'll have that certificate. So with the extra time on my hands, I saw the ad you guys had on the board, and I figured it was a good step in the right direction. Well, gaining some more experience from the board members and bringing anything I have to the board as well. I kind of, I lean a little more towards public safety, so whatever I can bring to the board in regards to that, I can do what I can. My son's getting a little older, so I got some more time on my hands, I figured I'd get back to the community a little more.
And Mr. Page did attend the planning board meeting the other night, and the board did approve his request pending Board of Selectmen approval. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Page? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Dennis Page as an alternate member of the planning board with a term expiring of 3/31/19.
Moved by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Multiple seconds, I'll give Mr. Schaefer this one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. This may be the shortest meeting you ever go to. And again, I want to welcome you, Dennis, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And see you on the 19th.
Yeah.
I believe, now he's gonna get sworn in, but...
Yep, he's gotta get sworn in.
You're gonna have, so there's some paperwork that we're gonna provide to the town clerk's office tomorrow. So if you can stop by here sometime before the next planning board meeting, they'll swear you into office.
Yeah, I'll get with Joan, I guess we can work it out with her.
It's gonna be the town clerk's office. But, yeah, you can reach out to Joan, and she can tell you what to do.
Alright, good, that'll work.
Okay.
Thank you. The second one, the planning board also recommended Tyler Perrin to be appointed NRPC commissioner for a term expiring, that expires on March 31st, 2019. Is there a motion for that action?
I'll make a motion to appoint Tyler Perrin to the NRPC commissioner with a term expiring of 3/31/19.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Item two, fire station project update. Good evening, welcome.
Hey there. You wanna join me?
Sure.
Gentlemen gave a extensive and very well presented presentation the other night to the planning board. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Do we want to start with questions, or you just want us to run through basically where we are and...
I actually requested that we just get an update, where we're at, how we can move forward. We had some discussion last week about bond councils and stuff like that. And I said, "How's everything going?" And we kind of all decided at that point, it'd be nice to have you in, give us an update of where we stand.
So very briefly, the construction documents, the design, all of the engineering is complete. Plans and specs are done. I'm delivering this to Frank today. That has been passed over to Ekman, who was the, who is the construction manager that was chosen. And I'll let Preston sort of update where we are, but we've made some decisions along the way, which I'm sure that's what...
Sure. Yeah, so we have received the plans and specs came in last week, so we're currently in the estimating process. We're anticipating completing that around Christmas. And we know that there is a budget committee meeting on January 4th. So we'll be prepared at that point to present the estimated cost, which would essentially function as a de facto GMP, guarantee maximum price. And that would be the basis of your Warren article for the construction portion. You know, there's other costs, soft costs and so forth, that guessing Troy and the chief are working on as well.
One of the issues that I had in terms of estimating is that the construction market, market right now is extremely busy. And rolling into, you know, the Christmas holiday, and then into, into January, and having to have a number. It was really my pushing, and then Ekman concurred, that not to publicly bid the job right now, because my feeling would be that we would get escalated numbers, just because people don't have the time to bid it, and they're gonna bid it. The bidding atmosphere right now is, I'll put a number on it, it's a high number, I don't really care if I get it, you know, if I get it, great, if I don't. And it's just not the right market. And we really thought that after the new year, once we get into February, March, it would be a better climate. So we decided that Ekman would price the project in-house, using subs that they typically use to come up with that GMP. And that we would wait until we find out what happens at the town vote, if you will, before we put it out. I really think that there'll be a better atmosphere for getting better numbers come mid-spring.
John, you understand the conversation we had at the budget committee the other night. They need some type of number in order to make a decision.
Yep.
And that's why we suggested this meeting. We all got together and suggested January 4th meeting for a presentation, so that they could go through, you know, have you available to ask any questions. And as they prepare for a recommendation, one way or another, they just absolutely need some type of good number to go by.
We went through some dates this morning, is it the 4th or the 12th?
The public hearing is the 11th. They, the meeting with the budget committee to go over the project is January 4th, Thursday, January 4th.
Okay.
We can be there?
Yeah, we'll definitely be prepared and have the number.
And that's why I sent the email out, I believe we sent an email. To give them, you know, they asked if they could have a week, you know, with the material and everything, so that they want to make an informed decision.
Yep.
By January 11th, so...
And that would be a 6 o'clock meeting on the floor?
I believe 7:00.
7:00. Okay.
At Campbell, or are we gonna be here by then?
Well, they were, hopefully, they were gonna try to reserve the auditorium.
Oh, right, that's right.
And encourage the public to attend the meeting on the 4th, to at least, just to listen and observe.
At the school?
At the school. That's, it's not confirmed yet, if I didn't receive confirmation. And then, on the 11th of January, that is a public hearing. So January 11th is a public hearing, and that, I think we're gonna be probably expecting to give the same presentation that you give on the 4th. And the public will be encouraged to participate, ask questions.
Sure. One of the other things I wanted to mention is, there is a project website that's been created. The website address is litchfieldfirestation.com. And it has all of the information about the design, all of the issues with the existing station, a great history that was put together by the captain and the chief. And really is a great resource for your residents to understand why this project is important. And when the cost information is available and has been made public, that will all be posted there as well. Oftentimes, bond council, once those anticipated rates and the impact for the average, you know, house has been determined, that information can be there too. So litchfieldfirestation.com is a great resource for all of your residents to learn more about the project, why it's important.
Can we start publicizing it?
Yeah, we just finished up the last couple of things, so we're good to go. Truly live with it now. It's been live, but we can...
It's gone, so, it's off there now.
I know, I'm sure that you will be putting the information on the Litchfield WhatsApp, the Facebook. Will you have anything going in the Hudson Litchfield News to tell the people?
Yes.
To go to the site?
Perfect. We talked about that. Talked about maybe doing some open houses, or coffee with the chief.
Yeah, some open houses, and then we already started reaching out to some of the groups and community groups in 55 and older communities that have kind of organized meetings to seek invites to.
Any other questions? What works for me. If you want to flip up one, we can at least show them the site plan as it's been developed. In the far bottom right-hand corner, you're actually connecting to the parking lot out front of the town hall. So we have designed the site for the future buildout of additional space for a potential police station, should it ever be added to the building. One of the things that we're gonna work out with Ekman and with the engineer is how much of that, there is a graphic, another graphic that shows a potential much smaller buildout of the site with, for just the fire station. Is it in this light, or? That's the whole, I think that's the whole civil engineering package for the planning board. But it's not there, because basically, we're permitting the entire thing. The alteration of terrain permit is in with state. A couple of other smaller permits that are out there pending that we should have back. We've done the courtesy review, as we said, with the planning board. So other than that, we're in very good shape.
Is that the one there, John?
Yeah.
You were talking about?
But I think if I just get up and point here, that's the full...
Potential, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna maintain this curb cut, which is basically emergency vehicles, both police and fire leaving the site. That this curb cut off of Liberty would come in and have a double-loaded parking lot here. And then this will be just the drive lane around to the back. So we won't build out all of this parking, we won't build this parking potentially as phase one. The numbers come in, and it's all good. The selectmen may decide to build out the whole site.
Questions for members of the board? Comments? Were there any comments the planning board had? Any issues that...
There were a couple of comments. I think Mr. Samuel had some issues, questioned whether or not there should be a light on Albuquerque. And quite frankly, all of the stations that we've done in the state, it's really not something that, that both towns and, even though Albuquerque's not a state road, that they don't advocate for that. There is a sign warning you of emergency vehicles to both drive lanes on either end of the site on Albuquerque. And the building sets back far enough that you will clearly, and the sightlines are, you will clearly see a fire truck leaving the building, entering Albuquerque.
And another thing he questioned was, he didn't understand that, you know, the curb cut there with all the apparatus coming out, he was concerned, he said, "When they all pull out." Well, we, he explained it to him that they don't all go out at once, you know, it's like one at a time. And he was just unaware of that, you know, and that's understandable. You know, public doesn't really know how that, they just want that truck there. And... So he seemed satisfied with all the answers. I think all the members seemed satisfied with the answers. And that they understood it was a courtesy, and I think they were appreciative that the presentation was thorough and that they were made aware of it. Any, anything else? Do you have any questions, any comments for us? Anything that you need from us?
We just have some dates that we need to work out in terms of how this moves forward. I do have a small poster, if you will, 11 by 17, that I'm gonna get to the chief, that he can distribute around town. I do have a question as to what verbiage that is on that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm asking, can the town advocate to vote for this? Or should the poster say, you know, "Go to the website for facts"? There is some, maybe town council needs to be addressed as to...
We should double-check that, Troy.
And I raise it because it's come up in another municipality where whoever their town council is...
I remember problems of school board members advocating, or the school board advocating for a vote. I don't believe they can, I don't know that they can do that.
That's electioneering, I think.
I know, which they, they do, but I remember the last, it was recent.
Well, the one that we've done...
We should just find that out for sure.
We've changed it to say, "Support your local fire department, visit www.litchfieldstation," you know. Prior to that, we had "Vote for the Fire Department." I actually went to the one that we did back in '04, and it said "Vote for," so...
Troy, can we find that out tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's more of a political question, because usually, Board of Selectmen, town councils, they will remain neutral, and just provide factual information. You have groups and friends of and associations that will get out there, and if they support the project, they'll be out there supporting, encouraging people to vote yes on Article Number 3.
Yep.
And that's typically what I've seen, you know.
Can, can we just...
But I can double-check to see if there's anything that prohibits the town.
Tomorrow, we just want to make sure we do it exactly right.
That was the only issue that I had at this point. The design is done, Ekman is pricing. Great.
I think that we've got, we're in the process of getting what we need, and so I think we're all happy, you all set?
Yep.
Anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Troy, it's already been published on ours website, it's also been published to the WhatsApp, and it's all in Twitter and all that.
Do you have it in your draft, ready to hit send?
I was gonna publish it last week, I'm going, "You know, I haven't heard anything about this website yet." I gave him access to it, I haven't really seen it, it was progressing really well. I like the format.
It's a nice website.
Yeah, it's laid out really nicely. It's nicely covered.
Okay, the 6:20, so I will open the floor for public input. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to offer input? Mr. Page, you're all set?
No, I'm already here, so I'll figure...
Okay, thank you. Hearing and seeing none, I will close public input and move on to item three, which is bond council approval. Mr. Brown?
Okay, as discussed with the Board of Selectmen at our last meeting, I told you that I would reach out to law firms that were recommended by the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, that provide bond council legal services. So we received three responses. Pretty Flaherty, Divine Millamette, and Drummond and Woodsman. They're all kind of the same price range. Pretty Flaherty, we currently use those folks for our work with St. Obane. This would be a different division out of the Concord office. And they're estimating it to be $3,000 to $4,000. In their proposal, they would have a $4,000 cap. And if the bond article fails, they would not charge us for any services provided up to, you know, the bond vote. What wasn't clear in their proposal was if there'd be additional fees for, if we did a bond anticipation note. You know, we may have to look at finding some interim financing before the bond is issued to the Municipal Bond Bank. Depending on when the construction project starts, we may not build a cash flow, it, it all depends on, again, when the project starts. So even though they say a $4,000 max, I'm not sure if that really included the bond anticipation note. Divine Millamette didn't have, you know, they came right out, said it's gonna be $4,000 to $6,000. Didn't have a lot of information about it included this, or it didn't include that. I can tell you that they are the most experienced bond council in New Hampshire. There was a period of time when only Divine Millamette was the bond council in the state. Mr. Barnes has been doing it for years. And then Drummond and Woodsman, Woodson, $4,500, but they, they were very thorough in their proposal. They had additional fees if we exceed the $5 million bonding. They also had a $2,000 fee if we did the bond anticipation note. And if we, if we did not go through the Municipal Bond Bank, it would be a fee of another $5,000. So I can tell you that the other two firms that we talked about, they didn't really specify about, you know, if we went outside of the Bond Bank and went do an own private sale, or went after different types of financing. Typically, the town of Litchfield is our size, we would, I would like to think that we would go through the Bond Bank. And the reason it's there is that smaller communities can wrap all their bonding into, you know, one financing package, and we're supposed to, by volume, actually leverage a better interest rate. All three firms can, can do this work. I have confidence all three can do it. Like I said, we have a relationship with Pretty Flaherty and Divine Millamette, very, very experienced firm, and I think those two are right in the ballpark.
Gentlemen? Comments, please? Questions?
I don't, I don't like the thought of using Pretty Flaherty, considering we already used them for something else. So I actually like to find the fact that Troy points out that Divine Mill...
Millamette. Millamette.
Is probably the best, most experienced to go with, because I would probably recommend them.
Is there a fee if it doesn't pass? The other two don't have a fee, or don't charge a fee?
I believe in their proposal, it looked like there, there could be a minimum fee of not any more than $1,000. But it really isn't a lot of work. What they're gonna do is make sure that our proposed Warren article is worded correctly, and they're gonna make sure that the wording of our public hearing notice is correct, and make sure that we give notice. And that's all they're going to do. So really, it's minimal work from just making sure that we cover everything correctly, so that after the vote's taken, legal counsel doesn't declare the whole process invalid, and we have to wait a whole year and do it all over again.
Any other questions?
I'll entertain a motion, if someone would like to recommend one or the other.
Troy, your recommendation is Divine? Is that what you're suggesting here?
I, I tend to think that if, because it's in the same price range, I think that is the best, the best firm. I mean, they specialize in all types of legal services, but I just know that they've been doing municipal bonds for a long time in the state of New Hampshire.
Is this the extent, we're not gonna receive any more?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve to use Divine Millamette. Millamette. Millamette for our bond council services.
Moved by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Troy? Uh, next item, authorization to hire full-time bookkeeper.
So we've, we've gone through the interview process. We have Heather Stamen, who's come to the top, she's willing to accept the job. She comes with over 10 years of accounting experience. She's, was a resident of Litchfield, sort of born and raised, educated through the school system here. Holds a bachelor's degree in accounting, and she's willing and ready to start work. We've worked out in agreement that her starting rate of pay would be $22 per hour, and able to start work next Monday, December the 18th.
That quick, huh?
Yeah.
Look at Troy, that big smile.
She, I guess she was excited to take the position?
She was very excited, and of course, I reached out to her about a week and a half ago, so she was able to give the traditional two weeks, you know, notice.
Awesome. I make a motion that we move to hire Heather Stamen as a full-time bookkeeper with a starting hourly rate of $22 an hour effective Monday, December 18th.
Moved by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Item five, prosecutor agreement.
All right, being involved, working with the Board of Selectmen and meeting with Mr. Coats, we have an agreement here that would extend the current prosecutor's contract for another three years. This would include a salary for year one in the amount of $68,000. And I say salary, but this is an independent contractor with no benefits. And for the first year, it would be $68,000 for services. This contract's been reviewed by legal counsel. Ready for board's action.
Gentlemen? I will accept a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the contract with our prosecutor for Bradford H. Coats. When's it go through? Effective December 11th through, I'm sorry, agreement shall commence on January 1st. So effective, should be January 1, 2018, through December 31st, 2020.
Moved by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 5-0-0. Mr. Brown? Holiday schedule?
Okay, this is the holiday schedule. Our personnel policy does not actually identify the holidays, so on an annual basis, the Board of... the holidays, so on an annual basis, the board of selectmen sets that holiday schedule. We've recommending that we go with the same schedule that we've had for the last two years, and it just requires your review and approval.
Gentlemen?
I make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen holiday schedule as presented.
Moved by Mr. Burnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion?
Troy, this is the same schedule as last year?
It is, yes.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five zero zero. Okay, National Regional Solid Waste Management District Cooperative Agreement. Mr. Brown.
Okay, so-
You didn't sign that, right?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is a cooperative agreement with all the communities that participate in the National Regional Plan and Commission through the has, Household Hazardous Waste Program. And as you, I think you're all very familiar with that program. They host throughout the year a collection of, in a way for citizens to bring all these things that you have at your house, paint, chemicals, and dispose of them in a safe manner. So they, this year, the contract that we've had previously, as I understand, been revised. Just really cleaning up some of the language. It's been a while. All the communities have signed the contract except for Litchfield. It's been reviewed by the, the legal council that represents this, this, the cooperative.
So would we, i- is that in the consent folder or is that in the folder?
It's actually just, you could authorize me to sign it. There's no place for, it's just unauthorized representative.
I make a motion to authorize Troy to sign the agreement.
Motion by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Burnell. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five zero zero. Road impact fee expense. Mr. Brown.
So if you recall, we received extra funding this year from the state. I think it was about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And we came to you with a proposal to pave, to pave about a mile of Albuquerque and about another mile section of Page Road. And we had an estimate for the cost, and we, we, using the bond, the highway block grant funding, we were using impact fees, and we had some other fees that we were using, and we thought we had everything covered, which we did. However, at the end of the day, the, the project came in ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars higher than we had estimated. So, and as, you know, again, the, everything is done, when you're doing paving, everything is done on an estimated per ton basis. So actually, for a two hundred thousand dollar project, not that far off. So I really don't, at this point in time, we'd like to use the impact fee fund, and I'd like to get permission from the board to expend ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars from that fund.
Is that the new impact fees that we just collected?
So those, what's brought the balance up, we've collected some other fees too. But yeah, primarily, that's revenue that's been generated from the Page Road development.
Got it. So the balance in there right now, is it twenty-five thousand?
That's correct.
Okay. If anybody else doesn't have it, they'll make the motion.
Okay.
I make the motion to move to authorize the expenditure of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the road impact fee account to cover the additional paving costs for the Albuquerque Avenue and Page Road projects.
Second. Moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Burnell. Is there a discussion or questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five zero zero. Okay, earned time policy update. Mr. Brown.
Okay, so let's see what pages.
We reviewed this last-
We did. We reviewed it at our last meeting. There was some discussion about adding some, some additional language. So on, let's see here, page eighteen is where... So we were talking about if, if an employee exceeds the maximum accrual amount, that that amount would be lost, and that would be at any time throughout the year. And the board wanted me to take a look at that and see if there's a way that we could, instead of taking that time from them, if we could transfer it to the individual sick leave account. So that's the language you see in green, where we, we would take that, the amount that exceeds the cap, and we would transfer it to the individual sick leave account. I just wanna- What's that?
Am I reading this wrong?
Which one?
Individual sick leave count at a rate of one earned time hour to three sick account hours?
Yeah, so I was just gonna point that out, that in the, in the current personnel policy, when folks have the right to, instead of selling their time back, they can actually take their time and put it into the sick leave account. And the ratio is that for every hour of earned time that you put into the sick leave account, you get three hours of sick time. And I think, and I struggle with that, but it's because-
Like a back account.
I, I know what it is. It's, sick leave, you cannot, it's not, you can't cash it in. So I think it was a way to say, okay, this has a cash value, and by putting in the sick leave account as a way of just compensating.
If that's our option, my option is to not do it.
Well, hang on, so-
No, it's a current.
For this, for this action, if they put, if they choose to put it in there, I think that's still fine, because it saves us money in the long run. If it, if it's exceeded, it's one to one.
Yeah, I, I was gonna point it out too, and I, at first, I wrote it one to one, but to be honest, when I'm looking at it, I'm like, well, it is something that's, it's, we are taking something from them that where they used to be able to cash it in, and, and that's why I saw some value, putting it, keeping the ratio the same.
They can still cash it in. They can still, they can still, when they, when they get to that point, transfer it over to the sick and get the same va- same ratio. This was all designed, if they maxed out, instead of not equi-, you know, accumulating more, it just goes into the bank. And a one, and, and my thought was always one to one. I didn't even consider the-
Yeah, I didn't, to be honest with you, when we talked about, I didn't realize that if you read the policy further down, that it was this one to three ratio.
I, I would support one to one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. A hundred percent on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not suggesting, I wasn't suggesting we change the current policy, but if they choose to put it in the bank, that's fine.
Okay. And the other area, if you just go down to the next page, the board had asked if we could have a provision in case we had a need for an exception, some, you know, unusual situation where maybe there's a vacancy, someone's been out ill, you know, those typically would be, you have a vacant position and this, you know, this, the employee was not able to take time off. But anyhow, this, by adding exceptions, this would allow the selectmen to have the option to, to waive any of these requirements for the maximum accrual, the minimum usage, and for buyback. So those three categories, an employee would have to submit something in writing to the selectmen explaining the situation, and the selectmen would deal with that on a case-by-case basis.
Gentlemen?
I'm fine with all the changes, with, with the exception of making it one to one, you know, making that same adjustment.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I've done enough.
Still moved. Moved by Mr. Burnell, and seconded by Mr. Bork to approve the changes with the exception, amend it to one to one in, on page eighteen. You all set? Troy with that?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion, questions, comments?
Just, when's this gonna go into effect? Effective immediately or?
Uh, well, the plan was to have it affect January first.
Okay.
Does it say that in, in it anywhere?
Uh, it doesn't.
I would just modify the, just to make it effective January first.
Yeah.
Two thousand eighteen.
Put it at the bottom, maybe, updated for January first, something like that. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five zero zero. Okay. Moving right along, town administrator report.
What's that?
Flexible Spivney.
Oh, no, I, I removed it.
Oh.
Strike that.
Okay. One of the things I wanted to bring to the board's attention is the highway agent has made me aware that there are some posts that a property owner has put down on, I think it's number one Bear Run Drive. And Jack went up to the homeowner, explained to them that, you know, having steel posts just inches from the edge of pavement is not acceptable, because these things, he hits them with his plow, he's concerned that they'll go, you know, in the air, they could damage property, pedestrians, whatever. They're not a breakaway thing, like we see these fiberglass poles or wooden grade stake. So I wanted just, he's done everything he could. He went up and talked to the homeowner. They were, I think, pretty upset that we were asking them to remove, be removed, and so he's asked me, talk to the board, make sure you're comfortable with it, and I could, on behalf of the board, send a letter requesting that they remove them.
Well, let's first of all, let's first of all say, I'm gonna guarantee that they're placed in the right of way.
They are in the right of way. They're right on the curbing.
All he's gotta do is take, all he's gotta do is take them out.
He could.
Have, have one of the police officers escort them down there for the ten minutes it's gonna take, have them remove them.
Can I prefer to send a letter first stating that if they are not removed-
Cause I was gonna say, remove them within a certain timeframe, or they will be removed.
Will come and remove.
I actually, I actually-
It's on the town's property, though.
So I'm, so let's, I'm not gonna raise the issue because I was approached by several neighbors in the neighborhood about it. My concern is that they could become projectiles. Obviously, the road agent agrees, so does in the police department. The issue comes back to, I know why the residents doing it. I get it. They're on the corner, they're on the curve, they have the snow curl issue, they have cars sliding in their front yard, but those things are not gonna stop anything. They're going to become a projectile or, or gonna go through a car when they hit it. They need to come out, but I agree with, I agree with Steve. I, I believe the road agents talked to, talked to the owner, and they basically told him flat out, no, we're not doing it. I think the next step is just to go down and take them out.
I guess I'm okay, but I wanna make sure we're on firm ground before we do that.
They're in the right of way.
I, I agree with you, and I wanna see them out of there. I, I don't have a problem. I, I, I don't have a problem. I just thought, he has been warned.
Yeah, he had a verbal, like I said, Jack went down, knocked on the door, had a conversation with the property owner, asked if they'd be removed, and I think they said that they're not gonna remove them.
And let's be clear, they're still there as, you know, if they're-
They're there right now. I saw them tonight.
If they were the typical fiberglass orange, you know, driveway markers, it's one thing. These are literally, these are the wire fence driving posts.
T-posts, you know, like chrome t-posts.
I, I really think that we need to try one more time with the police chief, with the police department, the road agent, go to the door ASAP, say, look, you, these need to come out within two days, or else we're taking them out. But at least a warning or at least a notification. Give him one more chance.
Well, the problem is, it's gonna snow tomorrow.
I, I understand.
I mean, if one of those, cause I, I know, I know-
My only argument about this whole thing, if you think about projectiles as far as what's gonna go, there isn't a mailbox in this town that isn't in the right of way for the town of, town of Litchfield. I can tell you personally, on my street, a couple years ago, every single mailbox was taken out. So my personal opinion, they-
But the mailbox, the thing about the mailbox is in one area where there's a wide up, th- these are literally, I wanna say they're about every four feet.
The large garden stakes.
Right.
I just-
I haven't seen it.
There's a guy on talent that does the same thing. We should talk to him, too.
Stuff, it's-
I just wanna make sure we're on firm-
I agree with you, Brian, a hundred percent.
Um, I would ask that the police chief and the road agent give one more chance, go up to the door, state, we will remove them within a certain, a reasonable time, two or three days, if you don't pull those out. Is that okay?
How about I ask this? Troy, can you draw up a letter for them tomorrow, so that they could maybe deliver it tomorrow afternoon? That would state they have until-
Twenty-four hours?
Twelve PM on fifteenth, which is Friday.
Okay.
To remove them, or they will be removed. Can I go remove them? I'm not doing it tomorrow.
Yeah, and then that they just hand-deliver the letter with the police and the road agent.
My personal opinion is, is, you know, let's try, try and work with people instead of force their arm or break their arm, you know what I mean? So that's why I'm, I side with you, Brian.
Well, as long as, I, I'm okay with that.
Explain to them why.
Right, and here we are, we're giving them notice, okay, and, and I agree with, I think that's an excellent way to do it. We're giving them till Friday, we're notifying them in writing, we're acting, I think, prudently, and I just wanna make sure we're on-
Cause I can tell you, it hap- it happens a lot that people put up markers, and they do it because they're so concerned about their precious grass getting torn up by a plow. And the problem that you have is that it narrows up the road, and the plow trucks try to stay away from them, especially something like that, because that's gonna leave a ding. So if something happens to one of our trucks because somebody puts up those markers, that's every taxpayer in town that's paying for it now.
Right.
Well, especially, they, they like to, you know, when the snow builds up, they wanna shelf it, and they take the wing and they ride it high, and they shelf it and throw it into the front lawns. And that's not scraping the lawn, that's a foot off the ground, but you can't do that to a house that has the stakes in the front yard. Three to four feet of my yard gets put ten feet further in every year, because I live on a bend, and the wing plow always digs down because it's on a bend, and it just scalps whatever I put there. It's part of life. It's not my land.
All right, are we all set with that?
Okay.
I don't think we need a motion, but we're all, everyone consensus with that process? Okay.
All set?
Yeah.
So Laura Gandia contacted me today. She's starting to plan the event for Pat, Pat Jewett Day, and she was looking for direction from the board as to when we would hold the ceremony. She would like to have it on March fifth, because it's close to Pat's birthday, which I believe is March first. I told her that we would meet on March twelfth, so that, we could accommodate her on the twelfth, but she would prefer the fifth. March twelfth is the eve of elections, so on the thirteenth, you'll be down, you know, at the polls all day. So I guess my question is, would you be interested in moving your meeting to the fifth in the month of March, or do you wanna remain on the twelfth?
I know the selectmen are usually present, but we don't usually, you don't have to do it during a meeting.
Yeah, it can be outside.
Well, the, in the, the past, we've been able to have like our meeting here, we just did a little bit of business, and then we would go out, and, but, but if we just have the ceremony on the fifth, that's fine, too.
Yeah. Then we just hold our meeting schedule as normal.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
Yeah, fine with that, okay.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then I just wanted to mention that I'm gonna be off this Thursday, going down to Connecticut, pick my daughter up from college, get her home. Also, that all this health insurance that, you know, we approved, Karen's been working really hard with all the employees and retirees, and she's done a tremendous job in getting everything submitted to the health insurance companies. And we're, we think we have everyone enrolled, and we hope that everyone will have a health insurance card by the first of the year. And we may miss that date a little bit, but the open enrollment's gone extremely well, and the whole process so far has gone well. The retiree folks with, the ones that received the subsidy were very thankful, so, and Brent was at the budget committee meeting with, you know, last Thursday night, and it was really nice to sit there and present to them a, a budget that now was below the tax gap because of the savings that we had through changing the health insurance. It was really nice. So hopefully, this change will- So hopefully this change will, um, help bring some, some stable rates to the town, uh, in the future.
Great. All set?
Set.
Thank you. Selectmen reports, Mr. Brunel?
Um, I don't have any. I've, I've not been able to attend the last two budget meetings. I know you folks have filled in for me, so, but I'll be there this week. Well, nothing else is new.
Mr. Perry?
You attended the planning board for me, so I have nothing.
Um, yes, I attended the planning board meeting Tuesday night. Um, they, uh, again, um, approved Mr. Page as an alternate member. Also, they had the fire station presentation again and, I won't go over, we went over it earlier. And they're meeting again on the nineteenth and I will be, uh, covering that meeting also. I also attended the budget committee meeting with Troy. Uh, and we're pleased to report that the budget committee, um, passed all of the warrant articles and our budget. Uh, they recommended all of them. Um, and partly, and as Troy said, because the health insurance numbers came in, we were under the tax cap. It was a very good meeting, um, and, uh, Troy made an excellent presentation and I thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, we were able to answer all of their questions and, uh, and, you know, schedule that January fourth meeting for them so that they can make an informed decision on the fire station, uh, recommendation. And so they're kind of excited about having that happen and, and as Troy said, they're gonna try to get the auditorium so that it can be, um, you know, they could share the information with members of the public.
Mr. Bork?
All set.
Mr. Schaefer?
Not much going on, nope.
Okay. There are no items removed from consent?
Is there any other business?
One other, one other thing, yeah, meeting, uh,
I've got one other.
Wednesday? Wednesday, the thirteenth.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna be meeting with some state officials, um, to discuss that bike path. Uh, per, you know, discussion on, on three A. So we'll be having a fire chief, police chief, some state officials and again, just informational, um, to see if, if he'll be, yeah.
And I'll share with you, gentlemen, uh, we just, the Board of Selectmen just received an invitation uh, from the fire department. Good evening, members of the board, on behalf of the fire department. Uh, they'd like to extend an invitation to members of the board to attend their award ceremony on January twenty-seventh from one to four PM at Pass Conaway Country Club. Um, please let them know if you can make it so they can arrange proper seating, uh, Deputy Chief John Travis. So as we, um, I will poll you as we get a little bit closer and, uh, see who will be attending. I believe that's all we have. Next regular meeting is December twenty-seventh. Um, the only other business to come before us tonight is a non-public session to deal with two items. And so we will go into non-public session and come out only to adjourn. And so at this point, I'll ask for a motion to go into non-public. Under RSA, under provisions of RSA ninety-one A colon three two A, hiring and compensation and three two C, reputation.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bork. Roll call, Mr. Brunel?
Yep.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
I say yes, Mr. Bork?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion carries five zero zero. We are now in non-public session. And we wish all of you a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and we will see you in between the holidays.
It's like December.